Pious Father of heaven and earth, of mercy and grace, thank you. Thank you for a beautiful day, thank you for a privilege of gathering, thank you for a purpose, thank you for giving us wisdom to make right choices. Most of all, I thank you personally that my life respect and an effect of your will in the place where you've placed me. I give you thanks for that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honoring the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
First item of business is to approve the minutes of the board meeting of December. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve is published.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item, opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board, anyone wishing to do so. Seeing none, hearing none, we move to the chancellor's report.
Okay. I'd like to go a little out of order here this morning. We have Janelle Lynn and Jacob Brooks from the Colleen Daily Herald here to make a presentation, so I'd like to call them forward.
My name is Jacob Brooks, I'm the managing editor of the Colleen Daily Herald. My boss, vice president and general manager, Tara Gandy, did want to be here, unfortunately had a prior commitment. But we're here today to recognize Chancellor Carter and the Central Texas College Education Board with a prestigious honor. You guys were voted as one of the best in Central Texas for college/university. And let me be the first to congratulate you on your outstanding achievement for the Mr. Gandy also wanted me to say that the best in Central Texas logo is one of the most recognized logos in our community. You may have seen it, a lot of businesses have this logo outside their business or organization. It stands for integrity, excellent service, and superior products. Our community will know that you stand out as an elite organization, and thank you for allowing me this honor.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Next, I would like to introduce our newest department chair. There she is, Mrs. Selinda Hallbauer. She was recently promoted to department chair for fine arts, replacing James Salter. Ms. Hallbauer, she earned a Bachel-- she has a very lengthy bio because she's extremely accomplished, as are all of our department chairs. She earned a Bachelor of Music degree in December 1974. Her commitment to excellence in music education is further underscored by her National Certified Teacher of Music designation in 1976, and the completion of a Master of Music degree from Baylor University in 1977. Ms. Hallbauer began her career at the University of Mary Harden-Baylor in 1975, progressing to become the Director of the Preparatory Music Program and a faculty member teaching piano pedagogy until 1995. Transitioning to Central Texas College in 1995, she undertook the revitalization of the music program, ultimately attaining the position of full-time professor of music in 1998. Her innovative contributions include the creation of distance learning music courses, including one of the earliest online college class piano courses in the country, leading to the establishment of an associate degree in music with the graduates transferring to institutions nationwide. At this time, I'd like to give Ms. Hallbauer an opportunity to come greet the board and share a little bit.
Thank you. I just appreciate this opportunity to serve here and continue serving at Central Texas College as department chair for the Fine Arts Department. We're looking forward to growing more, to some innovative new programs coming in the next few years, and to being the best we can be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
We also have a Title IX reporting update at this time, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Brooks.
Yes, ma'am. As you know, Title IX-- See how loud I am today. Did you want me to go down there? Would that be better for you?
Can y'all hear her on her microphone? Okay.
Okay. As you all know, Title IX is a federal statute, but there's also a state statute that runs parallel to it, and the reporting requirements are actually in the state statute, so it's Texas-specific. Historically, you've received a report per semester, so one in the fall that reports for the summer semester, one in the spring that reports for the fall semester, and then sometime in the summer for the spring semester. The statute requires one report either in the fall or in the spring. So while we've been doing more than necessary, it runs a little bit conflict with the other reports that the Title IX coordinator is required to do, which is quarterly, and those don't line up. So quarterly and three times a year have been a little bit confusing on the staff side. So to keep-- to follow the state law, what we will be doing instead, we'll be reporting once per year. When you see that report, as you know, you don't have details, you don't have names, it's numbers. That report is also placed on a website as soon as it's reported to you, and it stays there, and that won't change either. The quarterly reports that the Title IX coordinator makes to the chancellor, those will continue, but the jiving of three and four per year, we're getting a little confusing. And so we've spoken with Dr. Carter, and that's the change that we're proposing to make.
Next, I asked Dr. Garrett to provide us with an enrollment update. We'll do this regularly at the start of each semester or term, just to give you all an idea of where we are.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. I'm excited, I've been watching the numbers for spring, and they look really good so far. As of Monday, we've had a 12% increase in enrollments for spring of the Texas reportable students. That equates to 24,131 enrollments. It's a significant increase. We have 8,478 unduplicated students. That being, central campus itself is up 10%, distance learning is up 13%. We're coming close to matching the spring of 21 enrollments. Back in spring of 21, the enrollments were 24,254, and as I said, we're 24,131 right now. That being said, though, we haven't reached census, and as we get closer to census, students sometimes drop, and so that number may go down a little bit between now and census.
Good report.
Any questions?
Was that 12% increase, was that year-over-year or from fall to spring?
Spring to spring, just the spring semesters, comparing spring semesters.
Awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
When the enrollment start maybe starts to decline, what measures do you have in place to follow up with the students that are choosing to withdraw?
We usually reach out to them from Student Services to see where, what we can do to help them. We have start dates every month, so once census passes, they can enroll in the next online or face-to-face session the following month, but we do follow up with students that we lose.
And letting them know that they have the support, financial support also.
That's right. Definitely, definitely.
Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Throughout the 89th legislative session, you will see the legislative update as a placeholder on my report, so that I can share with you in real time anything that's going on. I will tell you that the TAC organization, along with the other community college presidents, we will be meeting once a month to discuss legislation being filed that impacts community colleges, and we will then share with you anything of significance. And so their bills are still being filed, not much discussion, but bills are still being filed, and some of the more significant include Senate Bill 579. And what that, the impact of that bill, and it's relating to an exemption from certain requirements regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, and so what it's looking to do is exempt privately funded scholarships from the DEI provisions outlined in Senate Bill 17, which was enacted during the 88th legislative session. And so, as you've seen in the news and even here at Central Texas College, there was some fallout with that. So that bill seeks to exempt private donations. Also, and I identified this as a legislative priority during our last meeting for TAC, Senate Bill 49 relating to the performance tier funding under Public Junior College State Finance Program, they're looking to include independent colleges and universities of Texas, basically include private universities, because right now, one of those performance measures are outcomes of schools, students who are transferring from the community college to a university, but it's a public four-year university, is how it reads right now, but as we know, many students, they attend private schools. There was a subsequent bill filed that just added on to that to include out-of-state universities, so we'll be tracking that pretty closely, and there are a few others. Some language changes with regard to accrediting agencies initially, there was some language in one of the bills that was specific to SACS, but there was a change, there's a proposed change to make it read "any" accrediting body. So we'll keep an eye on those things. Something that's really interesting to note is that House Bill 85 was-- I don't know if I'm reading that correctly. Anyway, the proposed legislation is a constitutional amendment, excuse me, providing for the creation of funds to support the capital needs of educational programs offered by the Texas State Technical System, TSTC. And so what this, the impact here is that it would establish a $1.5 billion endowment for TSTCs in Lamar State Colleges, allowing for an annual withdrawal from the fund of up to 5% with new limits on uses. So we'll be watching that one pretty closely also, those are competitors. Also, what I'd like to talk about, just briefly on quickly, you all have seen the president's directive through the OMB office regarding federal agencies, directing federal agencies to temporarily pause the disbursement of grants and loans for federal financial assistance programs, other than for Social Security, Medicare, and other programs providing direct aid to individuals. Well, as you can imagine, since that time, there have been several questions. I did receive a call, because I'm being asked questions, but none of us at the community college or university level really know the full impact. What I've provided you is a copy of that initial OMB letter and a subsequent Q and A that was released, and that's something that I was waiting on prior to coming to today's meeting, so that you would have it in real time. So the Q and A is contained in pages three and four, and one of the questions is, is this a freeze on benefits of Americans like SNAP or student loans? And the response is no, any program that provides direct benefits to Americans is explicitly excluded from the pause and exempted from this review process, and then you can go on to read it. So there are some exceptions. I suspect, this being somewhat fluid, we will learn more as we go, but I wanted to make sure you had that information today, and I will keep you informed. The next item in my report, nursing endowed scholarship. In December, we had a donor who wishes to remain anonymous donate $100,000 to an endowed nursing scholarship for our students, and so we are quite appreciative of that. She's a former nurse herself. I had an opportunity to not just give her a thank you card, but to visit with her and express our appreciation collectively on behalf of the board and the administration and the students and faculty and staff of Central Texas College. And I spent a wonderful afternoon with her. It was really nice. And so she appreciates the work that we're doing, she says we're doing good work, and she strongly believes in the health sciences, she said, but in particular, the nursing program. We are thankful. And I promised her a follow-up visit. I think I made a friend. Sixtieth anniversary planning, we have a committee formed to plan our celebration of the college's 60th anniversary throughout the year, so we're looking at a series of events, some of which will highlight alumni and donors and bring folks to our campus, so more to come on that. We actually have some samples of a seal for this year, so we'll get that selected, and we'll start using that in some of our communications.
Did you mention a date?
No, well, it will be throughout the year, unless you tell me to spend that kind of money. I had not planned to. Doug has a few dollars set aside for me, but I don't think it'll cover. And we're looking to do something a little more intimate throughout the year whereby we can engage everyone.
Any questions, observations, on behalf of the chancellor?
Early on, when you began speaking, you said something about the scholarships, privately established scholarships. How does that affect the foundation in their distribution of those scholarships?
Well, this, and you helped me out, Ms. Payson, as well as Ms. Briggs, we did have a few scholarships that we had to change the language a little bit. Some schools had to eliminate scholarships altogether, we did not have to do that. Ms. Payson met with those donors whose scholarships were impacted by Senate Bill 17, and they agreed to the language change, the language changes that would bring us into compliance with Senate Bill 17. It wasn't without some warm conversations, but they did, and so we're still able to award those scholarships. Hopefully, during this legislative session, we can get that corrected, because I believe that was really just an unintended consequence of that bill.
Okay, but in the, with the scholarships that specifically say a race of people or--
You had to change it.
You had to change it.
Yes, we did.
Because I'm thinking about mine, and I think mine specifically said women, and I need you to look at that, take a look at that.
Okay, I don't believe so, but I will double check it, yes.
And if there are, but we have talked to everyone that had specific groups. Wow.
Ms. Payson and Ms. Briggs did a really good job with that.
That's a lot, thank you.
Yeah. And as the chancellor had mentioned, there were some, you know, discussions that had to be made, but they understood that it wasn't our decision or wasn't the decision, you know, moving forward, but yeah.
It's amazing, this is just one woman's opinion. It's amazing that someone can tell me what to do with my money. That is amazing to me, I--
Yeah.
That doesn't happen to me very often.
The culture we live in. Anyone else? Next item of business is discuss, consider approval of the November 24 and December 24, hearing financial statements and investment reports.
I'm going to skip to December, since that's the latest month. On your first page, your statement of net position, there's not a lot of discrepancies there, managed from your cash and investments and those washed out. You'll see that your unearned revenues have risen from, have increased to $1 million five from the same time last year, that's always a good sign. You're deferring the revenue, but when that goes up, it's a good sign. On your second page, I've left you with some explanations of those changes for taxes. I'm going to wait till March, and that'll be a better indicator of where we stand. November, December, January, February, those are the big months where we collect, so we really won't know the impact of what we did back in August until March. Did everybody understand my line item regarding tuition and fees? If not, I can explain that a little better.
Please do.
Okay. So one difference between this year and last year, last year we were collecting the full tuition rate of $100 for fast and dual credit. This year, we're only able to charge 55, 56. That difference, we're not collecting, so that's a difference between this year and last year, and that kind of goes back to your question a couple of months ago. In my analysis, it looks like, you know, this is my estimate, we will need like 36% of those students from the fall to reach 15 semester credit hours to break even on that lost revenue. When they hit 15 semester credit hours, we'll get $1,500, and we'll need like 36%, that's my estimate, to break even. Anything after that is money. And I'll be able to update you with that again probably around March for this spring. It takes a while to, for Janelle to reconcile the numbers, confirm them with the state, that has to go through a process to see who's, we can actually submit, so it takes a little while. So anyway, your bottom line is a little less than this time last year, but when you figure in the bonus, and then when you figure in the lost revenue from the fast versus the tuition, you're actually up. And then with your investments, you had a couple matured at 1.1%, and then that was replaced with one at like 4.2%, so that was a good maturity.
Any questions about the November report? Your motion to approve? Motion been made and seconded? All in favor say aye. Thank you. All right. Did you give us both, November and December?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was my mistake. Thank you. Item six, discuss and consider approval of Board Document 440, Order of Election. Ms. Havens?
Good afternoon. I'm bringing the order of election for upcoming Board of Trustees, a general election that's going to be scheduled for May the 3rd, 2025. We have three positions opening with expiring six-year terms, and then one special election for an unexpired term. The filing period started last Wednesday, and it's open until February the 14th, Friday at 5:00 p.m. The order lists different polling locations throughout Bell County and Corial County, and this year, Corial County is not supporting us because they don't have an election, or the resources are for them to support our election. So I've been in contact with Conference Co by SD, and they're allowing us to use their district training facility for polling.
Where is the district polling location?
It's on Sunny--
Avenue?
702 Sunny Avenue, Building 200.
That's Lombardi Way?
It's kind of like behind the stadium.
You couldn't get to boardroom?
I asked, and they said, no, it's not available.
Any other questions concerning that notice?
Our other option, we could have it on campus here, but that was, I spoke with Dr. Hawkins' office, and that's what they gave us.
This report requires board action, is there a motion? So moved. Motion seconded?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any other questions?
Can we discuss now?
Yeah, I can discuss now.
Okay. So in Corial County, in the CCSD section of Corial County, because those are eligible voters for the Board of Trustees, there's about, roughly about 27,000, 28,000 registered voters in that school district, and I heard what you said about them, they could all just come up here. That's a lot of people, potentially, usually you probably see between 500 and 1,000 people come out on election time. We'd prefer it be a lot more.
Yeah, and we're the only ones having an election in Conference Co.
Yeah, but concerning the junior high area where that one location is, that's a traffic problem, and to be able to get in and out of that area, unless you know where you're going, you'll miss it every time. I think I know where Mr. Armstrong was trying to describe where it was at and stuff, but is--
Yeah, it's at the south end, kind of runs parallel to Robertson Avenue, there's a little exit from the junior high from the stadium. It's right as you make that exit, I believe it's the building to the left. If the kids are on the move from class times or coming or going, then it'll be very hard to get through that as a non-student or a bus person, it'd be crazy. If it's a, if we can discuss, you know, with the school district, maybe a better location, that's a problematic location, in my opinion.
We can certainly go back to the school district. Ms. Havens has had a number of conversations with the school district, and this was the best they were able to offer. If you want us to go back and find another location, we'd have to be prepared to pay. But it's whatever you want.
The--
Oh, Ms. Briggs would like to say something?
The other thing is, the discussion about the location is absolutely relevant, and I'm not trying to stop that, however, Ms. Havens has a deadline for calling the election, and that's really the item that's before you, and I don't, the deadline would be before the next meeting, correct?
Correct, yeah, the 14th of February is the last day to call.
So if you have a problem with the location, I'm not saying that you can't, but what I am saying is, I would make a, I would recommend that today you pass the order, and we can always come back and amend locations later, but we have to call the election before February 14th.
Recommend that over tabling?
If we table it, you table it to your next regular meeting, which will be after the deadline. So yes, my recommendation is that you pass the order, calling the election with that location that Ms. Havens has secured for now. If she's able to change it, we can bring back an amendment to the locations, but we have to call the election itself before February 14th.
All right, we have--
Chairman, I'll call the question.
Question been called for. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, motion passed, thank you. Next item is discuss and consider approval of Dr. Tina Adi as Vice Chancellor Emeritus of Instruction and Workforce Initiatives.
Good afternoon. We have our emeritus policy that states that individuals are eligible after they've completed a year, a year after they've retired. I can't believe it's already been a year since Dr. Adi has left, so I'm here today to request that designation for her. She was with the institution for over 25 years.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion approved. Motion been made and seconded. Discussion, questions? All in favor say aye. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Item eight. Time to consider the self-assessment process that Dr. Garrett worked so hard on and got us good reports from SACS. So at this moment, at 1:28, the board will go into executive session pursuant to Government Code Section 551.074, Personnel Matters. section five-five-one point zero seven-four Personnel Matters. section five-five-one point zero seven-four Personnel Matters. pursuant to government code section 551.074, personnel matters. pursuant to government code section 551.074, personnel matters. pursuant to government code section 551.074, personnel matters. Thank you, sir. Charles, anything recommended?
Yes, sure. Nothing.
I have nothing.
First?
Nothing, thank you.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Or is there a second? All in favor may escort yourself out.